This isn't really a Zoom.
Yeah, you can look at the screen for the Zoom stuff if you want.
I mean, this isn't... Do I need that top line?
Um, you can just... You can say per city policy. And then we've got Jan Joyce here.
Hello. How you doing? Yeah.
Take it away.
Give Joe about thirty seconds to get seated in here. Okay. All ready? No problem. You're here, that's what matters, right? We got pens for you if you need one.
No, I know what it is. I'm happy to sign.
Okay, let's get started. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is a meeting in conjunction using Zoom for City Policy. Welcome to the Sanford Planner Board Meeting for August seventeenth, 2022. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you are unable to see or hear something. Please note if any Plenary Board members have any potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state their name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents and those who are neither for nor against or may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have the opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. Chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that any rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, etc. will not be tolerated. If these behaviors occur, the chair at his discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another date. In addition, chair at his discretion will limit repetitious comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments and then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Plenary Board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, zoning ordinances, or other relevant regulations. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeal rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the Plenary Board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at its next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street in Sanford. This is a public proceeding, you have the right to see and hear what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay. Okay. Um, do we need to work on?
Yep.
This is a call a person, okay. All right, so we'll make a motion to table the minutes for July sixth and twentieth?
Again.
We can do that both at once, right? Okay. Okay. And second, and vote to call. Vote, show of hands.
What are they voting for? Is that a yes?
They're voting to table.
Yes, the table.
All who's in favor.
All who's in favor, yes.
Those opposed say no.
Those opposed say no.
The eyes are above the nose.
And please note that Diane Connelly is joining us remotely this evening as authorized under City Policy, and she just voted in the affirmative for the vote.
She's... Show of hands, Beth, uh, Diane? Yes. Okay.
Both of them.
Both of them. Just gotta get back to get used to having in-person meetings again. So out of practice here. Okay, the first item on our agenda is gonna... not gonna happen tonight. Um, this was decided by the Site Plan Review Committee and it's not coming to us, so you can skip over the battery storage facility. So that brings us to the next item, Old Business File K-32-54. This is a minor site plan and minor subdivision. This is for tax map lot thirty-two, lot fifty-three, to split a parcel at Four Tibbetts Avenue. It's owned by Sean and Lisa McDermott to construct a duplex on the new parcel.
So just to kind of... just to orient the board, the Site Plan Review Committee did review this project yesterday, and they made a recommendation for approval of the project with a set of conditions which are included in the suggested motion on the project. And we'll go through those at the appropriate time. Above and beyond that, I don't really have much to say. There is a representative here on behalf of the applicant. That's Devon Hurley. He is available on Zoom, and I believe that he is in the process of sharing his screen so that you can have that in front of you when he kind of introduces the project and you discuss it.
Okay, if the applicant is here, if they can speak to their proposal.
Hi. Yeah, first of all, let me introduce myself. My name's Devon Hurley. I work for Colliers Engineering Design and I'm working for Sean and Lisa McDermott with their subdivision and site plan application. This is, uh... this is something that we had discussed quite a few months back now, and we had some storm water management issues that we had to address, but now we are through all that, so... To refresh everyone's memory, this is, uh... This is a... The site's at Four Tibbetts Avenue, and it's a proposed subdivision, so there's... The existing lot has an existing duplex on it, and they're proposing to split the lot and build a new duplex on the other half of the lot. Currently, the lot is... It's a, you know, it's a lawn that is very flat. And, uh... Yeah? Does anyone... Does anyone have any particular questions about, um... About the development? It'll be served by a ten-foot wide driveway coming in, and parking will be in the rear for, uh... For the proposed duplex.
Any questions from the board?
I was at the Site Plan Review, there was questions on the driveway, whether it was gonna be paved or gravel.
Uh, yeah, my understanding is that it will be gravel.
Okay. Any other questions? And O'Meara Preventure is here. Any concerns from the city? I think there was a couple that was raised in the notes.
Well, you can take one of those mics if you want, just turn it on.
Yeah, so, um, we... The only outstanding issues that I have on there are some kind of minor notes. Specifically to, you know, to speak to Jack's question, the buildup of the driveway, buildup of the apron, and, um... I left my notes over there. I think I called out for... Oh, the sidewalk as well, because they're replacing some of the sidewalk. I think I had one note about erosion control, specifically where the, um... Where the existing pipe exits the lot now and goes into the city's closed drainage system. I wanna make sure that gets protected. All of those notes are mainly... It's something that we can work out after the fact. It won't change anything substantial about this, uh... This plan. It's mostly for the purpose of, uh, you know, constructability and making sure that, what was designed ends up being built. So just connecting those gaps. The one thing that is, um... I guess I'll call... I'll say bigger, is a bigger concern, is the location of the, uh... The snow storage. As it is right now on the plans, I believe it's on kind of the opposite side of a grass swale along the driveway. So the logistics of that, um, you know, it's certainly not favorable to plow snow over a swale or fill in the swale is what would end up happening. There's, you know, a pretty good chance that it would get filled up and contaminated with whatever they use for winter surface treatment, whether it be salt or sand. So there's some logistics to be worked out as far as that goes, but, um, yeah. That pretty much covers it.
Anything that needs to be addressed in the conditions of approval, or?
Yeah, they are. I believe they're in the, uh... The suggested motion. It's, again, something, you know... It's something that's relatively small that we should be able to work out after the fact. That wouldn't change the orientation of the, uh... Of the lot too much.
Nothing else from the site plan? Okay. Um, if we have no other questions, I guess we can...
Have a suggested motion. Now I remember why I sat next to Oliver, so I could edit and hand it off to him. We'll get this straightened out by the next meeting. So the suggested motion is that the Plenary Board accepts the information in the August eleventh, 2022 summary report and the August sixteen, 2022 recommendation from the Site Plan Review Committee, grants the requested waivers, and finds that the proposed minor subdivision plan... Oh, do you wanna go to findings first? That's... You wanna... Yes. Thank you, Jack. You continued the public hearing, so you may wanna see if there's anyone here to speak and then close the public hearing. And then, yes, you're right, we usually do findings before we get into the motion.
Oh, yeah, you wanted to. You were gonna miss those, weren't you? So we did continue the public hearing from last time, so I will ask if there's anybody who would like to speak on behalf of this application? By the audience or anybody on Zoom? I think it's just the applicant that's on Zoom, is that correct?
I believe so. I can no longer see that, but I think that only the applicant is on Zoom. If there is somebody else on Zoom who wants to speak to this, just please speak up.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
Yeah, um, I just had a question, if I may, before you do findings of the facts.
Diane, you may wanna wait until the public hearing is closed.
I'll wait, thank you.
Okay, anyone who is opposed to the application? Any comments, neither for nor against? All right. Here are none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I know you.
Diane.
Yeah, Diane? Did you have comments?
Yeah, my question is about the gravel. Um, what type of gravel is being put down, the size, so on and so forth? Because my concern was with the assistant engineer in regards to plowing of the swell and gravel being pushed out into the drainage system and the swells.
Um, I can look into that for you. I'm not sure that they have, uh... That they've gotten that far yet to, um... Where they've actually decided, you know, exactly what materials they're going with, but everything they do will be in accordance with the road design standards.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're all set with comments from the board, I think we'll go to the finding of facts.
Okay. So there will be several votes here, but I have clustered the elements. The draft finding was mailed out, emailed out to you yesterday. So the first category... Categories are two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point, um, one, and actually, these are the old citations, and I will correct them. Utilization of the site, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eleven. Natural features, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve, groundwater protection, and two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six, um, shoreline relationship. The recommendation is that the standards are met. The explanation is that the project is designed to minimize impact on natural features of the site. No contaminants are generated by the project. Nothing related to the project will be discharged to groundwater, and no shoreline is impacted by the project.
Second.
Discussion on a motion? None? Okay, all in favor? Six. And Diane? Seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
The next grouping is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two, access to the site. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point three, access into the site. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point four, internal vehicular circulation. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point five, pedestrian circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition, and the explanation is that with the condition that materials and specifications for the proposed driveway, asphalt, apron, sidewalk, and turnaround area to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer is provided, these standards will be met. Internal vehicular and pedestrian circulation are adequately addressed in the proposal.
Motion to accept.
What you called, Lenny?
Multiple motions and seconds here.
So just pick two.
I think I heard Jack and Crystal, so...
Jack and Crystal.
Um, any discussion on a motion? All in favor? Okay, seven. Diane has her hand up, in favor.
Great.
Not opposed.
The next grouping is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six, storm water management. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven, erosion control. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the location of proposed snow storage removal in relationship to the drainage swale is designated to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer, and detailed notes regarding protection of existing drain outlet on the site is provided, and the note that says driveway turnaround is lawn is removed, and clarification of the surface treatment, all to the satisfaction of the City Engineer, these standards shall be met.
Motion to accept.
Second, Oliver.
Any discussion on a motion? All in favor? Let the record show, Diane has her hand up. Seven. Not opposed.
The next grouping is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eight, water supply. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine, sewage disposal. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point ten, utilities. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen, solid waste disposal. The recommendation is that the standards are met with condition. The explanation is proposal... Proposals to access electric and other utilities is adequate, and with the condition that the minimum ten-foot separation between sewer and water line is provided, these standards are met.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, including Diane, not opposed.
The next grouping is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen, exterior lighting. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fifteen landscaping, and two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eighteen buffering. The recommendation is that the standards are met with condition. The explanations are that no exterior lighting is proposed, and with the condition that the phrase tentative is removed in notes one point five... Note one point five is revised to acknowledge that the applicant is required to get amended minor site plan approval from the Planning Department if it seeks to modify details regarding plantings, including species, size, and/or location, these standards are met.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Seven, including Diane, not opposed.
The next is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen, technical and financial capacity. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity to complete the project in conformance with the approved plan.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, including Diane.
And the final motion is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen, airport encroachment. The, um, recommendation is that this standard is not applicable. The explanation is that the project shall not encroach on the airport zone.
Motion to accept.
Second, Oliver.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven with Diane.
Okay. So now, ready for the suggested motion?
Yeah, we're ready.
All righty. The Plenary Board accepts the information in the August eleventh, 2022 summary report and August sixteen, 2022 recommendations from the Site Plan Review Committee, grants the requested waivers, and finds that the proposed minor subdivision plan and minor site plan application file, number K-30-55, to split the parcel at Four Tibbetts Avenue, owned by Sean and Lisa McDermott, and construct a duplex on the new parcel, has satisfied the requirements of Article Six of the subdivision ordinance and Article Sixteen of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. One, by September seven, 2021, and... Yes, sorry, I'm confusing myself with the motion that was yesterday that actually changed that date. By September seven, 2021, unless other arrangements are made with the Planning Director, provide five copies of revised plans and documents to the Planning Department that adequately responds to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, provide materials and specifications for the proposed driveway, asphalt, apron, sidewalk, and turnaround area to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. B, remove the phrase tentative and revise note one point five to acknowledge that the applicant is required to get amended minor site plan approval from the Planning Department if it seeks to modify details regarding plantings, including species, size, and/or location. C, to designate location of proposed snow storage removal in relation to the drainage swale to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. D, to provide notes and... Uh, excuse me, provide details notes regarding protection of existing drain outlet on the site to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. E, to verify that the minimum ten-foot separation between sewer and water lines is provided. F, to remove the note that says driveway slash turnaround area is lawn and clarify the surface treatment to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. G, to remove the note that the Sanford Sewage District will bring the lateral sewage line to the site. This is a private responsibility. Two, to coordinate with the Assistant City Engineer about plans to tie into the city's drainage system. And three, standard condition... Planning Board Conditions of... Conditions of approval, sorry. Numbers, two, which relate to performance guarantees. Three, which relate to Autocad. Four, which is the recorded signed plans. Six, which is the inspection escrow fee. Seven, which is the pre-construction conference. Eight, which is the timing of landscaping. And nine, which is alterations of plans. That's it.
Sure.
That's it.
Motion to accept. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. The... In which they have to have their, uh... Plans in is a year past.
Thank you very much. Uh, everybody okay with modifying that motion to say September seven, 2022? Okay. And just clarification, who made the motion? Jack? And the second was Tom? Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Yes, six and seven, including Diane, not opposed. Motion passes. Okay, good luck on your project.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have a good night, thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. Next on our agenda is the Plenary Director's Report.
So this is gonna be very brief tonight. I just wanted to introduce, and I have done that already, to the board, but also to the audience, I'd like to introduce Kyle Boyd. Kyle is the new planner in the Planning Department, and you're gonna see more and more material coming from him. He's coming up to speed very rapidly. He's got, um, a good ten years' worth of experience working in planning communities and as planning directors in both... In at least two of those communities in Massachusetts. I encourage you to spend a little time chatting with Kyle and getting a little more information and, you know, making a personal contact with him. It is... You... I can't tell you how exciting it is to finally be fully staffed. It was a full year that we were down by a third of the department, which Kyle's now filled that position. It was two months out of that year that there was not a... An administrative assistant. Jan came in and saved me last fall. But I am incredibly happy to report we've got this full staff, and I am hoping that Kyle will come up to speed very quickly, as I'm kind of expecting he will, and that will create additional ability for us to take on other tasks beyond development permitting. And some of the ordinance writing that we've been doing. Beyond that... I don't... I don't think I wanna take up much time tonight. I wanna think through and... And when we come back to our next meeting at the beginning of September, I'm hoping that I'll have a better set of things. Oh, there is one thing I will talk with you about. Last night at the City Council meeting, I made a presentation on a new grant program that the Governor's Office of Policy and Innovation for the Future is offering, associated with a partnership with municipalities to help implement the Governor's Climate Action Plan. There are about nine pages' worth of projects that would be eligible for funding. This initial step does nothing more than to authorize the York County Soil and Water Conservation District to act on our behalf, to submit an application to enroll us in the program. We will know by October or November if we've been accepted. I fully expect we will. We are, you know, a targeted community in York County. And if we are enrolled in the program, the City Council will appoint an advisory committee. Feel free to consider putting your name forward or to recommend that others in the community put their name forward. I'm not sure how big the community will be... The committee will be at this point. But what that community advisory committee will do is they will work with, again, the York County Soil and Water Conservation District on our behalf. The Planning Department will be involved. I suspect we'll have some people involved from several other departments, Public Works, maybe Codes. May see some people from the Water District, Sewer District there as sort of staff support. The committee will undertake a self... A community self-evaluation. Part of that, I suspect, will be done by them. Part of that will be done by reaching out to the community and inviting comment. There will be a public meeting associated with that, a community meeting. And then what the committee will do is to designate priorities for action, and that will be reported back to the City Council, and it will inform us as to which grant, you know, what we might wanna propose for a grant. And that makes us eligible to apply for up to two grant applications in the course of the year for about a fifty thousand dollar grant. Not a lot of money when you're talking about doing roadwork or, you know... You know, major culvert replacement and stuff like that. But it is an opportunity to get smaller projects done or to use that money to supplement money that's already put in place for larger projects.
Does the council make the final determination?
Yeah. But the committee will make recommendations to them, and my expectation is that...
I'm deaf ears.
Say it again?
Oh, thank you.
But there are like nine pages of eligible projects, you know, and they span everything from transportation to emissions reduction to policy development, ordinance development, engagement... Further engagement of the community, so there's a pretty broad list. I've already started going over that list with staff and house to find out where things might already be happening. And it's... It's, you know, we've already started down... And it's, you know, we've already started down the road on a number of the projects. So it's an interesting opportunity. Elements of the comp plan, I would say. You know, to the degree that we're probably going to end up having some focus, whether it'll be a chapter or just a concept that we carry through all the chapters, sustainability is very likely to be among those issues. And so, yeah, I think that there will be opportunities, particularly if we start heading down the policy development road or the community engagement road to supplement that. You may also prefer to wait and use that money to start implementing pieces of it. I don't know how long this is going to last. It obviously depends, I think, how long the governor stays in office. So we know for the next couple of years, at least, it's going to go forward as proposed. If Governor Mills is re-elected or if her replacement chooses to continue on the path of the Climate Action Plan and to fund this, then it will carry further beyond that.
Beth, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Would this also include projects like Good Old Brook and maybe another looksie at the tree canopy throughout Sanford and Springville?
Yeah, so one of the things that the manager talked about, both at the subcommittee meeting as well as last night at the City Council meeting, is that he's hoping that a strong focus of these small grants will be on continuing efforts to clean up and revitalize Good Old Brook. You know, we've created a management plan, restoration plan. We've got two implementation grants already that have been funded and that we've executed, and we have another implementation grant in front of the Department of Environmental Protection right now. All of this goes toward, obviously, revitalizing the Brook, but as most of you know, there is this program that the federal government has started called MS4, which is looking at stormwater quality and degradation of receiving waters. Right now, and over the past two decades, it's been largely an exercise from the federal government designating areas that have compact development patterns as being in this MS4 category. We have been surprised that Sanford has not been included up to this point. And since I've been here, when we had the first census, but we didn't have the second one in place yet, it was our expectation that we would be designated, and so we've had this internal policy to try to meet all of the requirements associated with MS4 communities, so that when we are finally designated, that we will only have one item left on the to-do list, which is this very, very extensive public engagement program. And usually, that's a project that on its own costs about $50,000 to put together, and that's just the plan. And so, we're hoping to get our hands around this, continue to work on this. It's become even more important because the state, in this last legislative session, independent of what the feds have been doing, has identified communities in Maine that will have to meet higher stormwater management standards. I thought for sure Sanford would be included on the list, but I think what they did is they simply took the same communities that the federal government had designated for MS4 designations. So it's coming, and so I think the manager wants to make sure that we continue on this path of trying to address those issues and use these funds where it makes sense. Diane, does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the only other thing that I wanted to point out again at last night's council meeting, there was public hearing and first reading on the proposal to extend the moratorium on lagooning and digging into the groundwater table to create ponds, and these are both associated with mineral extraction activity. The justification is that we've made substantial progress. The Planning Board is in the, you know, the council has received the task force report and asked the Planning Board to begin the formal review and comment process. No one commented at the public hearing. First reading was concluded. As required under our charter, there needs to be a second reading, because this is considered an ordinance, and that is going to be scheduled for the first meeting in September. It would give us until, I think it's another 180 days, so it takes us into, I think, March of next year. And, you know, we're all hoping, is there wood here? We're all hoping that we will be through the process before the expiration. I'm all set.
Any communications from the rest of the group?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if you've got it, but I sent you an email this afternoon. I wanted to maybe have a future discussion with the Planning Board as a whole about a particular property in South Sanford that's now put up a sign with a codes permit, but it has a medical marijuana dispensary, but it also has another lot in front of it, which is now apparently a store of some type or counseling for medical marijuana. And I'd like to have a discussion with you in regards to that project, please.
We certainly can discuss the issue with Jamie as well in terms of compliance with the city's ordinances. My understanding is that there is no authorization for a medical marijuana dispensary anywhere in the city. I know that some of the...
Signage.
Right, but the use itself is not an allowed use, I believe. And Jamie is the guy who'll make the call on that. The signage, there are very specific requirements about signage. If they're talking about medical marijuana, then the way that they can distribute that under our ordinance is with the designation of an office, and the ordinance is very specific in saying that you may not identify anything besides the fact that it is an office. So I will raise this issue directly. Oh, Jamie's online, so you can talk with him right now.
Yeah, Jamie, go ahead.
I first would like to say, I used the wrong word, my apologies. Dispensary is not the correct word. It's a grow for medical marijuana in the back, and the front is some type of consultation, education. When we approved these projects, we did not, they did not check off the box that said they were going to add to these projects. So maybe if Jamie could clarify, I'd like to hear it, please.
Good evening, everybody, Jamie Cole. Diane is semi-accurate in her description. So there is a medical marijuana cultivation facility on a rear lot, on a completely separate map and lot number, completely separate lot. The owners of the medical marijuana cultivation facility did purchase what was a single-family house and has turned it into a consultant business to teach patients and doctors and medical professionals and anybody that wants to listen the benefits of cannabis in the modern-day world. So Diane is also 100% correct that we do not allow dispensaries in Sanford. We do not have any dispensaries in Sanford. We do not allow signage for the cultivation facilities. Again, this is a completely different map and lot number. I will agree with Diane that it's kind of convenient, the method and means of which they chose to open up an education facility on a lot in front of their cultivation facility, but they are completely two separate businesses. They did get creative on their name. It is called Vet, as in V-E-T-T, and then a hyphen, and then Ed, E-D. So their cannabis cultivation facility is called Bedded, and their educational facility is called Vet Ed, but not the same. I actually had concerns about it being the same name and confusion to people because of the proximity of businesses. We do not, any consultant business, including one for marijuana, or cannabis as it's now called, is not regulated under our marijuana policy ordinances. We regulate the cultivation, the manufacturing, the sale, and the processing, and everything to do with it. Testing is not regulated, and education is not regulated. So testing and education can be on any map and lot number that the underlying zone allows those uses on. So again, I agree with Diane that it's fairly convenient, the way this all played out, but that sign is not for the cultivation facility. It's not on the lot that the cultivation facility is placed on. It's on a completely different map and lot number. They cannot add on to the parent lot. The lot as it existed, as the date of the ordinance, is that lot. So this lot could never be combined with the rear lot. It is a completely separate entity, conveniently placed in front of the other.
I think it was convenient that they sidestepped around it just because it wasn't on the quote list. I'm not in favor of it. I think, you know, it was just taking advantage of the city. And those are my comments, and if the chair wants to have a private discussion with me, I'll talk to him about it later, thank you.
Okay, any comments from anybody else? One quick question from that. Does the city have enough money in its budget to patch that hole on School Street where it went around the car? Okay, that would be great.
The car will move, man.
With that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn and go to, move to our work session. Okay. Show your hands, I got five. Show your hand from Diane, so...